It is 7:00 PM for the North Kingston School Committee work session for our budget meeting tonight. If everyone could rise and say the pledge of the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maureen, if you could call a roll call vote, please. Linda Avanzato, John Biscarton.
Here.
Larry Cerisi.
Here.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Here.
Robert Jones.
Here.
William Mudge.
Here.
Kimberly Page.
Here.
Julia Held.
Here.
Chelsea Campbell.
Here.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Ogier, it is the superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you. I just want to, two quick items. First, I am very pleased to announce, if I can find my paper here, that tomorrow, here at the high school, at roughly 2:30, we're going to have kind of a unique ceremony to honor five of our students who have received Division I and II athletic scholarships. And they are Taylor Butler, who has received an athletic scholarship to play softball at Pfeiffer University; Madison Dom, who received a soccer scholarship for Syracuse University; Chris Hess, baseball at the University of Rhode Island; Alex McDoian, a football scholarship for Bryant University; and Ayesha McAdams for Stonehill College Cross Country and Trek. So, you know, congratulations to them, and they're going to have this very unique ceremony tomorrow. Go ahead and clap, that's a great thing. And that will be right after school tomorrow in the media center here at the high school. We'll be honoring them. And I also want to report, you know, I can't go into any detail because our test scores are embargoed, but administrators and school committee members have been able to see this year's test scores, and the news is good, so I'm very happy about that. And at next week's meeting, Dr. Humbert will do a detailed analysis of the scores, and we'll go into a lot of detail about how we fared. But generally speaking, the news is very good. So I'm going to leave it at that for now.
All right, so that actually brings us to the first item on our agenda, unfinished business and policies. If the committee could bring up version two of the policy tonight, that is actually the first one we need to talk about. We met in January as a policy committee, and there were a number of things that we talked about with this policy, and we haven't come to an agreement yet on where to go with this policy, so that is why it's on our agenda tonight. But version two, what we did agree is that these are all format changes. This is cleaning up some of the positions that we no longer have, changing the names to positions we do have. It is making sure that the baseline salary is what it is supposed to be. But the biggest change that we have in here, and it's the reason we have the first thing on our agenda, is a budgetary change. Because one of the things that we, this is actually, I'll give you a little bit of history. A number of years ago, this policy used to be in place where everyone in administration who had sick days, if they didn't use their sick days at the end of the year, they would carry over. And about five years ago, we said, nope, we can't take the sick days away from you that were accumulated, but if you don't use them within that year, then you lose them. You'd have to come to the superintendent to specially ask if there was some reason that you didn't use them that year. And so then we said, okay, why do we keep these on the books? And we said, we'll give a payout date. And we put the payout date five years down the road, because it seemed like it was long enough away that we wouldn't have to worry about it. Well, here we are, five years later, and now the payday is among us. And the issue is that we have had some people retire, and so when they retire, they get those long ago sick days that they accumulated. But we have some people who are still here, or actually, a lot of people who are still here, who accumulated a lot of sick days, because in our administration, we don't have as many people who take their sick time. And so there's quite a bit of money out there. And what we'd like to do is change the policy from being that you got the sick days at the end of, is it this year, Mary? Or is it next year? At the end of next year, that you would get them when you retire, or when you leave. And so that is the reason for the change in version two. All right? And so that's what I would be asking for people to vote on tonight, so that then we can take that savings, and you'll see it as one of the proposed places that, Dr. Ogier, we wouldn't have to budget for next year, because that is in our budget right now, and it's, what, seventy-two?
Two thousand.
Seventy-two thousand. So that would be part of it all. The policy, or version number one, is then for us to discuss. So, because the policy committee came down to, and you've seen this policy before, we came down to, we had one sentence, it is in version one, it is the highlighted sentence, that we could not agree as to where we wanted to go. But why don't we take version one first? I mean, I'm sorry, I'm confusing him. Version two, the pro forma, just basically getting rid of the payout of the sick day pay, and let's have a discussion around that. Mr. Cerisi.
I'd like to make a motion to amend that policy as noted.
Second.
All right, so does anybody have any questions, or is any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Mudge.
Specifically, I'm on version one here.
No, we're not ready to discuss version one.
I understand, but I made my comments, so we're on...
We'll come back to version one, and you can make your comments.
No, it's really, so, version two, what paragraph are you on, please?
Section 1, item 2.
Accrual. Accrual. Yeah, accrual, okay. Yeah, nothing changed, so I have my same comment that I had in here, okay, with respect to this paragraph. First of all, okay, with respect to this, I'm asking myself, when I look at this carefully, we've been pretty generous, I think, in terms of what the folks are entitled to. For example, just entitlement. You know, what you're saying is, a first-year employee that comes in here gets, you know, four weeks' vacation, okay? And right off the bat, I think that that's a bad precedent. I think we ought to have something to the point that, you know, if you work for one year, you get five days. Two years, you get two weeks. Three years, you get three weeks. Four years, you get four weeks. Or some progression like that. But to have somebody just coming in off the street, and they're getting four years of, I mean, four weeks of vacation, I think is a little absurd. Okay? Also, I don't have a problem whatsoever with an employee accruing up to a maximum of one year of vacation. For example, if somebody gets four weeks of vacation, you're to be allowed to be accrued, to accrue four weeks of vacation. So at most, the max you ever have, when he left, or whatever, would be, you know, eight weeks of vacation. This gives our, I think, employees an opportunity to couple some of this up, and, for example, take extended vacations if they would like to during the summer. I would also be apprehensive with respect to this by taking the accrued vacation during school time, as opposed to summer. So there's some of the questions there. Also, I would ask, to my knowledge, I'm unaware that we have, we have a mechanism to account for the accrual of the vacation pay that we're going to pay these people over a period of time. Do we have an accrual account? And how much do we have in the accrual account? Let's say, for example, everyone left tomorrow.
We don't accrue vacation days.
Yes, we do. We do right here.
But not dollars.
No, no.
Not dollars.
We're on vacation, okay? What you're saying is here, in this policy, okay, you're basically allowing people to accrue a week or two of vacation. And I don't have a problem with that. But if somebody does get under this proposal, which I think is too strenuous, is that, in fact, if we were to allow someone, the superintendent under this policy, to take and allow somebody not to take their vacation, and they wanted to take five days, and accrue that, run that over for the next year, if you may, that should be accrued in some account, because it's an expenditure. It's an obligation we have to pay for that person upon him taking it in the future and/or retiring. And also, I'm very concerned about this, because, and the reason I'm saying that, if we allow a policy to carry over where folks have an opportunity to take vacation pay, is they take it when school's not in session. So, you know, we're not impacting the ongoing activities, basically, so they could be put off in the summer. Right, let me get my glasses here.
Well, I do believe that Dr. Ogier is the person who is the arbitrator of when their vacation pay time can be taken, so that's...
Generally speaking, I would say about 95% of administrator or vacation time that's taken for GCB, it's not just administrators, but any GCB personnel is taken during off time, time when school is not in session.
Yeah, I mean, that should be, I think, with respect to your normal vacation, if somebody wanted to take a vacation day during the middle of the week, you know, I guess that's allowed. But if we were to allow, and I personally feel you should allow people to accrue up to a maximum of one full year of vacation, whatever they're getting, which would mean if they did retire, the most they would ever be getting paid for, provided that they didn't take any vacation pay the year they retired, would be, in this case, would be eight weeks, if they'd been here substantially. So I think that's something we need to really look at, in addition to, like I previously said, is, I feel that we're too generous on folks coming in here, and that these, we ought to look at restructuring the vacation pay right off the get-go.
Thank you. We did, when we revised this policy a number of years ago, we looked at what surrounding districts were giving in terms of vacation pay, because there was that suggestion at the time to do an incremental one week, two week, and that sort of thing. But it was found that, in keeping with being similar to other districts, that if we did something like that, we would not be very competitive.
Well, you know...
And so that was part of the reason that we stayed with this, that in the education world, for people who are at this level, they were, this is what other folks were, other districts were giving.
Well, somebody's got to take the lead in following this, and you know, I hear this rhetoric all the time. Somebody does it, and now the district, we have to do it here, and so forth and so on. And I think that, to give the vast committee credit, when they put the sick pay, or sick time up to 20 days, I think that they did a great job on it. We led in that. So, you know, we've got creep in our budget, we've got creep all over the place, and this is one thing that we ought to look at.
All right, so the policy on the table, though, is, or that we have for a vote, doesn't incur that. Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Maybe just to clarify or get context for what Mr. Mudge said. On 2C, where it says, vacation days can be carried over for one fiscal year with permission of the superintendent. So that seems to imply to me that there's a cap of that one year, that you can never carry over more than at least one year's vacation work. Seems to me that puts an ultimate ceiling of no more than two years, assuming nobody ever took vacation, which I think is maybe getting to what you're saying. It's, there's an implied cap in here, it's just not maybe clear.
If I can help in that clarification, that is the current policy. The policy that we're looking to amend, 2A, is for non-unit personnel who accrued vacation prior to this policy. So this is just that group, and just those days. It's not anything once the policy was in action. So we're just talking about those specific days. So what you're saying is, in fact, true, the one-year piece, for current time.
Well, I think it should be applicable now for everyone.
Oh, it is.
I think it is. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Biscarton.
If I understand it, what you said, doctor, and what you said, and trying to meld what everybody's said, and the policy, that what we're looking to amend is anything, anybody who has accrued vacation time prior to July 2008.
Yes.
Correct.
So any vacation time after July of 2008 rolls to 2C.
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, but see, the thing with that, John, is, and I understand that, is, with the 2C is, it says, otherwise, on July 1st annually, all days earned in a prior year shall be converted to sick leave and credited to the employees' eligible sick bank. Why? And what's the cost of that? And how much money do we have in the sick bank as a entity?
Well, I believe that you have to request, it takes time from the sick bank.
I understand.
It's not automatic.
But how, how we fund that? If somebody has to use that pay, okay?
This is a little off what our topic is on tonight. I mean, if you want to have a different conversation on how we do sick bank and sick leave, we can have that. But for tonight, the policy that we're asking for the vote for is merely to say you don't get the payout at the end of the five years, which ends next year, so that we can...
Well, no, I disagree, Madam Chair.
That for the savings.
Because this is a comment on the policy itself, and this is part of the policy.
No, that's part one, that we'll be commenting on the policy for itself, to be taking that back to the committee.
It's still, it is still part of this, if you were to vote on this policy, it's still part of this policy, if you were to vote on this option.
Yes, Mr. Biscarton.
If I can make an amendment to the motion, I would like to approve the policy at 2A, as you suggested, and also add 2C for policy review. Is that what you're looking for, Bill?
We're going to, you're going to...
We're going to be...
Yeah, okay.
We are going to be reviewing the policy in the Monday meeting.
Okay.
For Policy Committee. We're going to be reviewing it for other things, other than the end of the time period for the sick pay, vacation pay.
Yeah, that's fine, John. I think what they need to do is, we really need to do, when we do this, part of the money that's in the bank, and what that is, and are we putting it in the budget if we're allowing something to be accrued, basically.
And I understand, I understand your, I understand that.
But that's fine.
And I agree with it. If it's going to be converted to sick leave and put in an eligible sick bank, then there has to be a dollar figure attached to this bank.
Yeah.
Right, and I know, and I...
If we get to that down here, I think that's a problem.
But I, but to...
But I agree with what you're saying.
...we're really only, we really only want to vote on 2A.
They're fine.
Well, and you're cleaning up some of the other language in the beginning of the policy. So what I'm saying is, you don't necessarily need to amend your motion, because we will be discussing it on Monday.
Okay.
It's already on the agenda. It was what I said out to Ms. Burgland earlier today, to post on the Secretary of Website, it's what I sent out to the other committee members. So that's why I'm like, well, that's going to be done, regardless of this.
Okay, then I withdraw my amendment to the policy.
Are there any further questions on this?
So essentially, we're going to go over all this later again.
Correct.
Okay, good, good.
All right. Ms. Burgland, why don't we take a roll call vote? John Biscarton.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Yes.
Robert Jones.
Yes.
William Mudge.
Yes.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so the second part of this question, and then we want to get to budget, is just on version number one, it is the same, except for we have this one highlighted sentence in here. And the question that the policy committee is looking at is, what do we want to do about, when we have, under our teachers' contract, and we have teachers going up by a percentage base, do we want the administrators to be going up by a percentage base, too? That is the question that we were debating in the policy committee, and we could not come to an agreement. You know, the pros and cons. The cons are, of course, that then you're tying your administrators to the same thing that you're tying your teachers to. So if the teachers get a 1%, then your administrators get a 1%. If the teachers get no percent, then your administrators get no percent. The con would be that, or I guess that would, depends on how you look at it. Go ahead.
Okay. You know, this is a policy that, a change that I would endorse. I know that in years past, this policy was originally conceived to be exactly the way that Mrs. Page defined it. And this is done this way in school districts all around the country. For instance, an assistant principal may have an indexed salary, which means they take teachers who is on top step and may have a certain degree increment or something, and that is, that is the baseline for all administrators. And after that, Bill, do you mind, you're hitting your mic.
I'm sorry.
You're making a lot of noise. And so the entire administrative pay structure, pretty much, with the exception of superintendent and assistant superintendent, is handled on an index system. So a assistant principal of the high school may be at something like a 1.2 of that number. And a principal of a middle school might be a 1.35 of that number, and a high school principal may be something like 1.4 of that number. And that never changes. That just stays the way it is. There should not be the need to ever have a vote, one way or another, on an administrative pay raise, because the index is always there. And as teacher salaries go up, so will that index. They'll just go together. And that is the traditional way that this has been done in districts all around the country. Several years ago, in our district, we decided to veer away from that, and it presents the issue every year of having these competing decisions. With the school committee in a tough spot, I'm not necessarily sure that, in the long run, it necessarily saves any money. But it's always, well, we have a tough budget season, what are we going to do with this group of employees that don't happen to be teachers? And how are we going to treat them? And the fact that this always comes up somewhere in the middle of budget season, when the news generally is bad about how much money we have, it makes it very easy for the popular answer to be, oh, we'll do nothing, and we'll vote for a zero increase. And that has occurred. That has occurred in the last few years in this committee. Not every year, but in many of the recent years, there have been zeros, even when the teachers, in their salary, received a 1% increase. It doesn't feel right to me. It also doesn't feel right that that index thus becomes smaller. So when we hire a principal to be at, say, 1.25 of that top-step teacher salary, and in a particular year where the teachers get a raise, but the administrators do not, that index has just become smaller. It is not 1.25 anymore, which they were hired on, it might be 1.22 or 1.21, but it's getting smaller. And it decreases the incentive for a top-step teacher to want to be an administrator, because it decreases the distance. I know that there has been a feeling that merit pay has been something that administrators have, and that kind of takes care of that issue. But I would submit that in years where a principal may receive their merit pay for meeting the goals that they have in their evaluation, and then if they meet those same goals again next year, but they have not gotten a zero, they've gotten a zero in terms of a voted increase from the school committee, in effect, that principal has not gotten an increase at all. They got a merit pay last year, they got merit pay this year, there's no increase. So this is someone who's doing a very good job, received merit pay in both years, but has not received an increase. And that merit pay item is not something that is part of their pension, like a 1% increase is on a teacher's salary. So, you know, I'm just hoping that the committee, not necessarily tonight, but will vote to, you know, put those together, that, as it was initially intended, that the index would stay the index. And that's all that needs to happen. It doesn't have to be, ever be, a vote other than to renew administrators per the index, it's already set.
So what the policy committee was looking for tonight is not a vote on this, but to basically be given direction, because we went round and round on, we finally agreed that most of the committee liked merit pay, and so we weren't going to take that out. But we know that there are, there's at least one or two administrators who have received no increase in pay for three years, because of the nature of the contracts. And we didn't think that was fair. And we know that there are a number of administrators who have received two years in a row that they did not receive any increase. So it is one of those things of, we discussed, I'll give you the nature of our discussion. We discussed, did we want to tie this in with the other pay, yes or no? And then also, we also acknowledged that we can come at the end of each year, when we do budget time, and decide whether or not to fund merit pay for the following year. So that was the nature of our discussion. And what I would say is, since we're not voting on this tonight, we'll just go down the row, and just if people could give some feedback as to where you would like to see the policy committee go. So, Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to kind of back up a little bit on something, on some of Dr. Ogier's comments, and, you know, I'm going to play the flip side of that coin. We have some of the best administrators in the state, some of the best principals in the state, and I truly value the work that they do. At the same time, when we started this conversation on these contracts and on this policy some seven years ago, our administrators were in the top-five range, as far as salaries go, our principals and vice principals. And that's why some of these adjustments were made, not only for budgetary reasons, but also for equity reasons, as far as being equitable with surrounding school districts and statewide school districts. Our administrators are paid very well. I do believe we need to be equitable in the way we go about handling this. I think some of those years where there were zeros, obviously, they were for budgetary reasons, but I also think that the salaries, quite frankly, needed to be scaled back in order to be in line with surrounding districts. And, you know, that's not a reflection on anyone's performance or personality. Like I said, we have great administrators. It's a reflection on the economic times, the budgetary times, and being in line with surrounding school districts. Also, when we go to our bargaining units, the teachers and the ESP folks, they're in these difficult budgetary times, and we don't have money on the table, additional money on the table for salaries because of the budgetary times, I expect, and the purpose of revising this policy originally, was to see our people lead by example. If we're asking our ESP folks and our teacher folks to take zeros, we're certainly expecting our central office or district-wide administrators to take a zero ahead of those contract talks, to lead by example. And I can tell you, predating Dr. Ogier and many of us on this committee, that wasn't the case, always in this district. I sat here for many years, prior to even being on the school committee, back to when Mr. Mudge was originally on the school committee in 2002, and I watched administrators receive pay raises at the same time we were freezing staff pays. So, you know, there's a flip side to this argument. In some ways, we've... In some ways, we've created some inequities, and in some ways, I think we've balanced the scale a little bit. So, and, you know, Dr. Roger, the comments about, I've said this to you before, and I'm going to say it again publicly, the comments about 1% not applying to somebody's pension, my heart's not bleeding, when we're talking about six-figure salaries. And I think that's an insult to people that are making far less than those salaries, and taxpayers. And I've said that before.
Mr. Biscardin.
Thank you. Dr. You and I have had this discussion on numerous occasions, and we are diametrically opposed on this. I don't agree with a just-because raise, and that's pretty much what you're, what we're tying into the teacher's contract does. It gives people a raise just because. Merit pay works. I disagree with you. I know what you're going to tell me, I know what you've told me in the past. It works. The way you created the incentive package, it what determines how well it works or it doesn't. You have said on different occasions, in different instances, that you prefer us not to micromanage so you can do your job. Well, it looks to me like you're trying to put this on autopilot so you don't have to do a portion of your job. I think that there's ways around this. I think you can change the non, for example, change the non-teacher evaluation time. Don't make it happen right at the budget time. Put it in the summer, at the end of the year, when most people get evaluated, at the end of the work year, at the end of, or when they're hired. Their contracts come up every two years. You have the opportunity to adjust their pay accordingly, based on performance evaluations. And you can salary cap positions through, in the contract, so that gap can always be maintained. There are ways about it. I would prefer to go that route than to give a just-because raise. A lot about, and I'm not saying people are doing a bad job. Larry, you have a lot more institutional knowledge about the administrators in this district than I. I assume they're at least meeting expectations, because I haven't, we haven't had anybody dismissed since I've been sitting on this council, so I'm assuming they're at least meeting your expectations. There are ways to go about it. I do not agree with a tying it to a teacher's salary. I think that's the wrong way to go.
Mrs. Clarkin.
So, I know we've gone around and around this a few times, and I agree with Mr. Biscardin, and I've stated in the past that I am a proponent of merit pay, but I also understand that we can't continue to always be zero. So if in the past, we've been giving zeros because of budgetary reasons, and as Mr. Cerisi says, maybe he believes that we were at a higher pay scale than we needed to be, maybe one of the things that we need to look at is where we stand now in comparison to where other districts are paying their administrators. So maybe, number one, we should look at that. You know, I think we've discussed some type of hybrid solution. I don't know what that is. I certainly, the first proposal was to eliminate merit pay, and I'm not a proponent of that. I'd like to keep that in there, and find out some way of offering, you know, some increases, because, as I said before, we can't continue to just do zeros. And maybe if we can look at what other districts are doing, we can get some direction here.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on something Mr. Biscardin said. I do get the math point that, you know, the index can get smaller, but if you're on a two-year contract, the most that gap gets smaller is over the two-year period. It seems to me that it would be much more efficient to have a range, which I think we have, of a high-low, and then a targeted on the index, and then as each administrator's contract comes up, the index for that administrator can be evaluated based on their performance, and it might go up 3%. It might stay, you know, smaller because of that. I really think that a system where an administrator's performance in an individual year, which can, could be rewarded with merit pay, but, you know, if an administrator makes lasting contracts, or makes, or makes contributions that extend over the one-year period, you know, we need to find ways of recognizing that. And, you know, to incentivize administrators where, no matter what they do, their pay is tied to the actions of our negotiating team, and the negotiating team for the teachers' union seems to me to put them on the outside looking in. I know, I personally would hate, and I'm in a higher-ed administrative position now, that, you know, if I earned a million dollars in revenue for my business, but my salary and my evaluation was completely based on the Faculty Federation's negotiating skills, I don't know how much incentive I have to do that, other than my own, you know, professionalism. And I know we have great professionalisms with our administrators, but I think we've got to find ways, and I think that's part of the leadership's job, is to point out those who are doing exceptional and reward them, and point out those who maybe aren't performing up to the same, and discriminate under the compensation package as one way of recognizing that. So, I do agree with Mrs. Clarkin. It's good to keep having benchmarks and to be competitive for new hires, but I philosophically cannot support a policy where the work that a person does is completely divorced from how their pay raise might be determined.
Well said.
Mr. Mudge.
I agree with everything that has been said before me, but, you know, there are a few other issues that I think we need to look at, and that is, you know, we can't just look at it in North Kingstown either. Until a state, until a state looks at, and we look at this as a state, of what the best teacher should be getting paid in this town, or every town, in every district. You know, we're going to be going around and around and around, and always trying to play one district off another, because this guy got this, and this guy got that, and so forth and so on. You know, we haven't put, you know, we haven't put a value on what the best teacher should get paid in the state of Rhode Island, whether it's North Kingstown, or Jamestown, or Barrington, or anything else. There should be some framework we're working with. We're not working on this thing, well, Johnny Jones got this, so I have to get that. And so that's one thing that bothers me. Another is, when you talk base amount, by the way, in the calculation, what base amount are we referring to? Are we referring to the base amount paid to teachers? And the teachers range from, you know, step one to step 10. So, I'm not sure what base amount we're referring to here. Is it the base amount of the top 10, the top-step teacher?
I don't have that figure right in front of me. It doesn't really matter what the base amount is, but it has to do with a top-step teacher, probably department head with a certain level of degree. And then, the number is based on an index off of that.
Okay, so it's the top, it is the top-step teacher?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that. So it's not, you know, it's not the...
If it were a middle-range teacher, the index number would be different.
So, that's interesting. Another thing that kind of gets into this is, you know, especially as we see that, you know, ride is coming down hard on the unions, and so forth and so on, and I notice in our evaluation, you know, that we need to clean up, I think, in this policy with the ride, new requirements, and so forth and so on. You know, I look at this, and I'm saying, you know, there's an obvious effort going on throughout the state to really, to my way of thinking anyway, whether it's correct or not, is to really minimize the impact of the union, because a lot of people think they have a stranglehold on the pay system, and it keeps raising up. And I think that's going to change. In addition, you know, I think, what I see and feel and sense that's happening is, and if that's the case, that it seems unrealistic to try to hitch our wagon to the unions, okay? Whoever was complaining about, they're getting too much money all the time, and they're out of control, and so forth and so on, yet we take and we hitch the wagon to our administrators to that issue, or to that pay, so that's kind of disconcerting to me as well. I think, I think we need to go back and look at this again, to see how we can compensate the teachers, I mean, excuse me, our admin and principals and so forth. However, one more comment that I wanted to make. Sugar.
I'll be coming back to you. Mr. Cerisi has said that he has another comment he wants to make.
Sure.
I have recorded what people have said here, so that we can discuss this in our policy meeting.
I just want to back up again on some of my comments. You know, again, and I think the history is important here, and Mrs. Clarkin touched on it, when we talked about salaries being in line with surrounding districts or throughout the state, and just trying to get within the average, not the highest, not the lowest, within the average. You know, I'm sure many of our administrators may or may not be aware of this, may or may not have been here at the time, but back when we started this discussion, six or seven years ago, and looking at these salary numbers, there was a discussion around cutting salaries to bring them within the state averages, but rather than go that route, the route that was chosen was for freeze and pays, and again, it was for budgetary reasons and for the reasons to try to bring some of these salaries within the state averages. The, going back to the vacation conversation, again, the history on this is important. I think, obviously, we didn't have additional funding to offer in some of these contracts. And again, it's important to know the whole package, not just to pick out one detail of the package. Not having additional salaries, funding to offer towards salaries in this contract, I think the vacation time, as was mentioned earlier, may have been a little bit on the generous side, and I think that was a way to compensate for the lack of funding ability to increase salaries, because the vacation time for these positions does not cost us money. In other words, what I'm saying is, if a principal takes a vacation day, we don't pay a substitute principal to come in and fill that principal's seat for the day. So there's not a dollar sign attached to that. Whereas in a teacher's position, or a support staff member's position, a paraprofessional, I'm sorry, teacher assistant or whatnot, if they take the day off, there is money attached to that. We do have to pay a substitute to come in and fill that seat. So again, these are areas that we look to try to offset, what we can and cannot do. I'm going to end again, and, you know, I talk about the budget, and I say I want to stick to numbers, and I'm going to talk about this policy as well. This is no reflection on the job performance or personalities of any of our administrators. As I said on the onset, I believe we have some of the best in the state, and I believe, unfortunately, you know, there'd be a point where they'll be moving on to bigger and better things as well, so I really value their work.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Like I said, I...
I could continue that?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Mudge.
Thank you. You know, the other point I was making was that, you know, I feel that, because we shouldn't be making, you know, a policy decision based on the fact that we're going to let this thing go into automatic, and we're a school committee, and, you know, it's up to us to, every two or three years, to adjust this policy, and if it's not working, then shame on us, okay? Because we need to address this thing and compensate those people the way we should. But, you know, I think that it's unwise to just put us in the automatic mode, so we don't have to do anything. Okay? That's not a way to, you know, to run the show, so that was my comment there. And finally, with respect to what you just said, and Mr. Cerisi, I agree with that. One of the things I do feel is, when people come into the, come into the community, you know, I'm starting to think, and I've seen in industry, everyone doesn't just, all of a sudden, get four weeks' vacation the first day, you know, the first day on the job type of thing. So that's something I think we need to look at in the future for all employees. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the budget cuts. Dr. Roger.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. I'm going to go through some of the, my proposal tonight. As you know, the budget that we have talked about thus far is still $552,000 short of being balanced. Tonight, I plan on giving my proposal for how to go about balancing the FY14 budget proposal, and therefore, my proposal would be a 4% increase in-town funding for our budget. I'm going to go through these items, and then I appreciate the fact that Mrs. Cronkite, Mrs. Logan, and Dr. Kenworthy have come tonight. I'm going to ask them to talk a little bit about the issues that they're facing at their grade level. I also appreciate the large crowd from Hamilton Elementary. Thank you for coming on out, everybody. And, you know, a few weeks ago, the last time we met, I talked about, you know, kind of the vision items that I have, and that our administrative team, and teaching staff, and paraprofessional staff has as well, for this district. And it's not the easiest thing to quantify, and I think that, you know, a couple of meetings that I've had this week really kind of reminded me of the kinds of things that I see in my vision. You know, I was at Hamilton the other day, and watching a fabulous presentation on scholastic news, and, from a teacher and the staff, for all the other teachers, and using a smartboard, and as a way to use a smartboard very effectively, using this online resource that really made learning very engaging for the students, and brought, the lesson that we were looking at was about the inauguration. And it was all grade-level specific information, the learning tools were excellent, and you could just see, even though we weren't with students at the time, you could just see how students would have a great time interacting with this and learn a lot, and that's the whole idea. So, to me, that spoke to, you know, the need to be up-to-date and increase the technology we have in our district. We have a number of smartboards in this district, but there are a number of classrooms that do not have them yet, and it seems that technology is always an area that we pull back on last minute, when we find out the bad news, that we're not going to get all the funding that we feel we need. Another area, you know, I was at Fishing Cove this morning, and I was witnessing Mrs. Seidler and a group of fourth-grade teachers, first, and then second-grade teachers, going through what they call data teams. And they had targeted, using all of the various assessments that we use in this district, from our NECAP assessments, to AmesWeb assessments, to NWEA, they could target by name every student that had issues with reading, and math, and their grade-level performance. And not only that, they could target exactly what they needed, and they could strategize with the help of other staff members in the room, including the principal, exactly what they were going to do for those students, to make sure that they are, you know, receiving the instruction they need to get back to grade level, and to excel from there. And it was very exciting. And to me, you know, I know, I get a lot of questions from you all on the school committee and the town council about, well, what are the classroom numbers? What are the ratios that we have? You know, say at the high school, or per teacher? And the classroom-per-teacher number is one number, but there's so much more to it than that. There's the paraprofessional who helps the student on the side. There's the reading specialist. There's the special educator. There's, you know, there's all that additional support that really gets to the crux of what makes a school very successful. And to me, there's no more important indicator of how a school is special than, and more important than how many students are actually, you know, doing well on the test, is how well are you going to respond to those students who are not doing well on the test, who are not learning? How do you respond to students who are not learning? And that, to me, is one of the things that makes North Kingstown very special, that we have a district-wide focus that is getting better every day in that department, and our test scores, as you'll see next week, are getting better, and they have for several years now. And that's the key, finding out specifically what it is that the kids who aren't making it need, and then having the resources to provide them... it need and then having the resources to provide them to address those needs. That's key. And that doesn't necessarily come up with a one teacher to 22 kids in a classroom number. It's more than that. It's a lot of those extra little supports that are the things that we seem to always trim from the budget year after year. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we can do to get to $552,000 and then I'm going to ask the three administrators to come forward and talk a little bit about the kinds of issues that they're facing. And, and I'm not necessarily even pointing out that the things that they're going to be talking about tonight are even in this budget. But what I'm truly concerned about is that if we go deeper than a 4% increase, if we go to a 3% or a 2%, that's adding several hundred thousand dollars every time. And that's more distance between the vision that these principals have and how quickly we can get to address them. So, so, you know, to get to 552,000, I'm going to ask Mrs. King to help me with this a little bit. But, you know, I think we found some items that, they hurt, but relatively painless. And we can do this to get to 4%. The easiest of which is simply, um, the healthcare number. When we first put together our, um, our projection for healthcare, we were projecting a 12% increase in healthcare. And that's a huge number in our budget. And right now, the latest data that we're getting back is, from the trust, is that that number will likely be around 10%. That's $125,000 to the good. Okay? So that helps us. So now the number is about 425,000, where we need to get. We are looking at staff reductions. There are some reductions basically due to enrollment. Uh, grade five, for some reason, has been a very big, uh, enrollment year for our kids. And when they leave from the elementary school and go to the middle school, it's a little easier for the middle schools to kind of absorb those students because of the dynamics of how kids are scheduled at, at elementary and the middle level are different. So that would be three teachers at the elementary level that we would not need. And on top of that, we would have, um, an FTE, a full-time equivalent of a maintenance person. And I've asked Dr. Kenworthy to find one FTE, and that could be a combined number of five different classes that we are currently teaching at the high school that would not be taught, uh, next year. And I would ask that we give him the discretion to figure out how he could make that work. Um, the third item on your list is the vacation payout issue that you just talked about. That was $72,000 in savings. The next item after that is the elimination of a bus. We just, uh, had a presentation, uh, in response to our, um, bus transportation audit. And in talking with Mr. Horan, we feel that we can find one bus. Again, I would ask for the discretion, uh, you know, to allow the district to figure out how that's going to work. It may involve the consolidation of some routes and, um, but this would not be an impact on school start times like the other two. We feel that we can find one more bus. Um, and I'm going to let Mrs. King talk about the remaining items.
The next two items, the transportation billing to charter schools, we do that now. That was just not in the preliminary FY14 budget. And next year, um, this year, we're allowed to bill 40% of that trans, those transportation costs. Next year, we can bill 60%. Those are per-ride regulations. Also not in the last, um, in the preliminary budget was our agreement, our Block Island Technology Agreement. That's about $18,000 every year and that actually will go to show to reduce, um, a salary. It reduces salary expense for one of our IT personnel. The remaining items are, um, reduce the equipment budget. Um, we actually had several things in there that we had hoped for. What we really do need to determine is on the busing side, our, our mini buses. We have a couple of mini buses that are, um, really old. We were hoping to be able to fit something, a bus or, or, you know, I know maintenance needs equipment. Some of the other things that we had put in there and we just, we had put a lot of money in, we showed it in central administration, but a lot of it was, I know the schools are always asking for cubbies and chairs and desks and things like that that they need. Um, we, we tried to budget for some of that, but unfortunately that's been pulled. Um, and then we had, um, some other miscellaneous items, things that might not rise to the level of capital items, but other building improvements, you know, things that are a few thousand dollars here and there that we know always come up. Those have been pulled. Um, some supplies, we cut some supplies again across the board, which we unfortunately always tend to do. We think we're going to get to hundreds of thousands of dollars by cutting supplies. Unfortunately, that's not the case, but we did cut $28,000 out of the preliminary, preliminary budget for supplies. Um, we had a bunch of other miscellaneous items, information technology supplies, um, that were also cut. Uh, the custodial services number, that's based on information that I received, um, updated information I received, that we, uh, were able to reduce that number by. But then at the same time, as we're moving along, I think everybody knows that this budget is very dynamic. It's, it's not at all a static number. Uh, it's changing all the time and we are getting more and more information that there has been an even more increased interest in our Voc Tech School, our career and tech education. We had FY13, showed a very big interest in it. Uh, ride regulations have changed, have really opened up the doors for students for career tech and we were seeing another incredible amount of interest in those career tech. Um, so unfortunately with those cuts, the, the cuts that we have total $600,000, but we do need to increase our career tech line because I don't think we're going to have enough money there if we don't, uh, based on the information that we're getting from high school guidance on the number of students that are inquiring about career tech. The timing of that, as everything else with our budget, is way off. Uh, the students really don't need to finalize any of their plans until March or April. Uh, and then sometimes you really don't know, there are students in September that decide to go and, and, and that do go. So it's, it's a difficult number, but I do know we've had quite a bit of increased interest in it.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to ask, uh, Mrs. Cronkite, would you mind?
Can the committee have an opportunity tonight?
Sure. I didn't know if my presentation was still happening.
Mr. Cerisi.
I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve the list of recommended cuts by the superintendent with the exception of the, the bus elimination. And I'll go into my rationale on that a little bit further and on the, uh, when we have a discussion on the motion.
I'll second that for the purpose of discussion.
All right. There's a motion on the floor in a second. Mr. Cerisi.
Yeah. The, the, I just want to point out a couple of things. The 4% increase over last year's local funding that we're requesting comes to roughly $1.8 million. For every 1% we receive, it breaks down to 440,000. So the point that I'm making is if you, you receive 3%, you're going to have another 440,000 of cuts to make on top of what we're making tonight. If you receive 2%, you're going to have another 880,000 of cuts to make on top of what we're making tonight. So this is the very beginning of this process. Um, so, you know, you can kick the can further down the road, but the cuts that we're making tonight are the very beginning and they need to be made. So I think it's important that we have a thorough understanding of our revenue estimates first. Um, and again, the ones that, the one that I just mentioned was, was local tax. Whether those numbers, whether our state aid estimates are, are in line or a 100 or 200,000 off, the bottom line is, is that you're still going to have to make far more cuts. So we can have a discussion on the estimate numbers, I think, uh, revenue estimate numbers. I think we still need to discuss that. I think we still need to nail down those numbers. But regardless, uh, I think the adjustments that we make in those areas, if we do make any adjustments, will be minor in comparison to the cuts that will still need to be made. Um, my rationale for, uh, taking the bus, um, cut recommendation off the table at this point, we certainly, uh, still may have to do that. Uh, I just want to discuss that topic a little bit further, um, in a little bit more detail. Um, but I'm comfortable with the other reductions, um, that have been recommended at this point.
Can we keep the discussion to the motion of the cuts? We can have the whole revenue?
Yeah. We're just going to keep the motion to the discussion of the cuts. Mr. Biscard.
Uh, just a quick question, uh, just clarification for me. Um, Ms. King, the, the maintenance related items, the $75,000 that are on the sheet here?
Yes.
Where can I find that in the budget book? And, um, two, uh, what was that number, uh, not, not this year, because I'm sure it's not complete, um, because we're still in it, but what was that number for FY12?
You will see that when you get your revised budget, budget package. So what you'll see is you will see FY11 actual, FY12 actual, FY13 budget.
Right.
FY14 preliminary and FY14 recommended. And I can point out to you all those miscellaneous areas, you can see them, what they were and where they're going to.
So in other words, I can't find this in the budget book I have right now? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, because the budget book you have right now shows that we need to find 552,568 in cuts. That's what these cuts are. So there's not a new budget book until we, you know, and I can have it very quickly, but I didn't want to prepare hundreds of pieces of paper if these cuts were not going to be acceptable to the school committee.
Okay. Let me rephrase my question then. What lot, where can I find, in the budget book we currently have, where can I find the numbers that relate to the $75,000 you have on this sheet?
They are all miscellaneous items and they're, and, and when you, when you look at that, all those sheets, they're all, because of the way we have to spread things, they're all throughout all of the departments and all of the numbers. So you're not going to see where the $75,000 has been cut and it's not a complete cut to a zero of a particular line item. It's a piece here and a piece there.
I understand that.
John, may I?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr..
Do you mind?
Correct.
Maybe that, just clarify what Ms. Biscar said. Are these all from the same UCOA line just spread across?
No.
So they're from different UCOA lines?
Well, yes, they are because some are from the lumber line, some are from the building improvements line, some are from other maintenance related items. So when you have 10,852 accounts, just in your general fund like we do, they're spread out all over the place.
Yeah. But that's... Do you have the sum of what those lines were? So 75,000, what percentage is that a decrease?
I don't have that. I can get that for you. I don't have it right now.
Thank you, Mr. Biscar.
$75,000 on a 59 million budget is, doesn't really round to a percent.
John, can I make a comment, please?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'm finished.
With respect to your comment, I, you know, that's the same issue that I had in the past, by the way, is because, uh, I've seen things in, in the past that have been troubling to me, meaning we say, "We have to cut maintenance," or whatever. Well, I think we have an obligation to know what we're cutting and what we're not doing because we, we ought to be able to go to the community and say, "If we don't get this money, we're not going to fix that light bulb, or we're not going to fix that building, or we're not going to fix that air conditioning." We've got to be more specific when we say, "We're not going to do maintenance" because it catches up to us, continues to catch up to, and in fact, it's to the point, we've got $800,000 we want of the capital, for capital improvements in here, which is on top of this thing. So I, I agree with that.
But I think with, um, one of my discussion earlier with Mrs. King was that when we came down to a final budget that we were going to be sending over to the town council, that's when the budget book would be reprinted again. Am I correct?
Yes. And actually, I can have that pretty quickly.
Then we would see the new budget book with the new numbers because it would be sent over to the council and we would get a new book.
Before you vote.
Right. Because we had a specific conversation the other day as to whether we were to be printing out more budget books and I said, "No, not until we've, we voted on what we're going to send to the council and then we'll vote."
Well, you know, you just made a comment.
Yes, Mr. Much.
And Sharon, is that in terms of this, I'm concerned about the whole process. Uh, Mr. Cerisi, you know, kind of made some good points there, uh, and, uh, like with transportation and the bus, I think we need to go through with that and, and look at that and find out and know what the impact is before we ultimately again, cut a bus. Okay? Or what we need to do to cut a bus, just like for maintenance, we need to know what an impact of our decision is going to be made. But I want to go back a step. I want to understand the process because I have here in front of me, which I'd like to pass down, okay, that something that we need to take seriously. And that is the council, at an earlier meeting this year, uh, this month, has said they expect us to give them a 0% and 2% increase, the budget, and present it to them. And, and as you, I passed out, and I didn't see it in the minutes of the meeting or anything else, last week, I passed out, uh, some information that shows that our budget, if, if, to sustain our budget, if the town got nothing, okay, no increase at all, that basically at 2%, we're going to have to cut, and us just getting 2.5%, we're going to have to cut 1.5 million dollars in this budget. 1.5 million dollars. And one of the things that is troubling me is, first of all, from the process standpoint, it was my understanding that the budget we get from the superintendent in January is his budget. From there on in, it is a school committee budget and it is the school committee's budget that goes to the council. And I'm kind of concerned that when we got this budget, okay, back in January, it didn't reflect all the necessary cuts, so we had a starting point right here. Now, whether they go through or not, we should have had that recommendation because the prior month, we were back with the council saying, "We were going to go for a 4% increase." Well, to me, to my way of thinking, the budget that was submitted to us should have shown a, a balanced budget at 4% and, you know, period. We should, we should have that information. What we need to be doing now is, in my opinion, looking at this budget now and saying, "How do we get to the number 0% that the town council has requested?" And by the way, that's policy. That's school committee policy and that is town policy. So we have no alternative but to follow that policy and provide the town council with a 0% and 2% and a 5% and a 10% budget if we want. But as a minimum, I think we have a responsibility to do that and we only have two weeks to do that, basically. So, you know, we're really in a hole here. And, and we can't wait to give the council a 0% or 2% May 1st. We need to know what we're going to do and we need to tell the council, again, what they're not going to get if we get a 0% increase. We need to tell the town and the council, "If you don't give us, if you only give us a 0%, this is what has happened. This is what's going to cost us. This is what we can't do. The maintenance, the repair, the teachers, this program, that program will have to be slashed." And then for 2%. So we have to start at the zero and then fight from zero, justify zero, then fight for the 2% and then fight for the 4%. But, so we need to know what those, those, uh, those, uh, cuts or restorations are going to be. So I think we're behind the eight ball here, uh, substantially in terms of getting anything that resembles what truly is going to, you know, represent a fiscal year 14 budget in the next two weeks, next two weeks.
Mrs. Cloken. Um, just to pick up on, uh, the question that Mr. Biscard raised, because being the, um, the rookie this year, going through the budget, there were, um, some things that sort of struck me as I went through each section where there were some, um, substantial increases. Maybe one of them was reflected in this maintenance related items for the, you know, the 75,000. But I think something that would be helpful to all of us and, you know, the community at large and probably the town council is, if we have some light items that show substantial increases over previous years, it would probably be helpful if we had some type of footnote that would explain to us what justified that number and what was possibly included in that number. So while you may not necessarily be able to point to, like Mr. Biscard asked, the UCOA number that's in the budget book, you could at least have an idea of what that number encompassed. For example, just in the, um, the central administration, there was a furniture item for 20,000, gas went from 750 to 7900, lumber went from 150 to 15,000. If there was some kind of just footnote or explanation that gave us some idea of what was encompassed in that, it, it might help down the line in cutting certain things or we could have a better understanding of what these, some of these large increases were over previous years.
All right. I'm going to remind the committee that the motion on the floor is to approve... Lorraine, can you remind the committee that the motion on the floor is to approve the cuts that are on the sheet here in front of us, except for the transportation. Mr. Cerisi and then Mr. Biscarden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All the questions and the points that were raised are valid, but I just want to remind the committee that this is really a preliminary step in, in the work that we still need to do. We still need to have a lot, many more discussions. There'll be many more items in front of us that we'll need to consider. But as Mr. Mudge had mentioned, when Dr. Rogé originally presented this budget, it had a estimated $550,000 projection for a deficit in it, and he was concerned that we, by not sending forward a budget, would recommend a deficit. And I think the recommendations that he's making tonight addresses those concerns that he raised in putting forward a balanced request. Again, the important thing to remember is that this is, and you know, there's people on this committee that have been involved with this process several times and should know that this is a very preliminary step. There's cuts in front of you, recommended cuts in front of you, to eliminate $552,000. Certainly, there are other cuts that can be considered, and I think we're going to have to consider those cuts regardless. You know, again, this is where we get into the, we need to make reductions, and we don't have enough information, and this is, this is not, not difficult.
Mr. Biscarden.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Chairman Page. I think Ms. Clarkin's comment is worth repeating, because this is discussion, or this is not a discussion, but these are concerns I've had, and we've had, I've suggested these offline at the end of last year's budget go-round, that I think there needs to be clarification on large jumps on certain line items. And I realize that this UCOA is kind of a fluid thing, that every year it seems to consolidate lines and break out lines, so there'll be a lot of zeros, and then all of a sudden, a big number. But those are the things, I think, that in the long run are going to help everybody that looks at this understand better. And the more understanding we have on a situation as vital as this, the better chances we are of being successful. If we want to continue the way we've been doing things, and then questioning the result, I think is futile. We have to change the way we're doing business, and we have to change it so it makes sense for everybody involved.
Mr. Jones. And then Mr. Mudge.
Thank you. Mrs. King, the transportation billing to charters, is that a reduction of expense, or is that an increase in revenue?
Reduction of expense.
And where does that, does that just fall in the out-of-district transportation?
Yes, it would be where the billing is for charter school transportation. I believe there's separate UCOA numbers for that as well.
And the Block Island Technology reduction expense, is that an enterprise fund, or is that in the ?
No, that reduces the salary expense of an IT employee in the IT department.
General fund, okay. I guess to follow on what, what Mr. Biscarden said, and I guess I'd ask Mr. Cerisi that, maybe that we should approach this just slightly a different way, which is, I look at the first three and say, you know, that, that should be a no-brainer. I mean, they're, they're obviously, well, I won't say that on the second one. Let me rephrase that, sorry. The first one, I think, is obviously, you know, a, a simple change that, that's to our good. You know, the vacation payout change, the transportation billing, obviously, it's just, we didn't recognize. So there's some here that I think, you know, makes sense without much discussion from my part. I think there's a couple others that we maybe need to take a step back and say, "Okay, before we eliminate a bus," and this is where you do get into the revenue discussion, which is, I would ask Mrs. King, you know, at the last meeting, we talked about use of buildings, and we talked about where the budget, the actuals over the past years were substantially more than, than what was in the budget, and that's been true for the last few years. And so I guess my first question is, the approximately $40,000 to $50,000 in use of buildings, that to my mind was underestimated, was that put back in in figuring out the $552,000?
No, because the use of buildings is an enterprise fund, it's not general fund. These are general fund numbers you're looking at.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah, right now, Mr. Jones has the floor.
Okay.
So that was when, when you were, what you were looking at, it was looking at an enterprise fund account also. So that number has been adjusted, but it does not flow to the general fund unless we do something with that from that enterprise fund.
Right.
Enterprise fund for use of buildings, it's just like the food service account.
Yes, but we can transfer funds in and out, just like we transferred funds from the general fund historically.
We can.
So we could transfer out into the general fund.
Yes.
Sort of reverse, which means we could, if we budget and we match our actuals, in fact, as you know, I think we can do better, but we could reverse that out. And it seems, again, based on four years of close to $50,000 to $60,000 of revenue, to budget for $6,000, you know, before we cut $75,000 on maintenance items, I think we should take a step back and say, "Is there a likelihood of, of revenue in?" I, I understand Mr. Cerisi's point, which doesn't solve that there's a larger issue out there. But I think to perhaps give us some time and understanding that we'd like to at least clear off the $550,000, I think maybe we should take these individually and see if there's a, a delta left over, and then discuss if there's alternate ways of reducing that before we get to picking out all of these.
I'm going to jump in and make a comment. One of the things that, I mean, right now, Mr. Cerisi has a motion on the floor to take these cuts, as we have here, except for the elimination of the bus. That's one you don't have, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, that's what we're going to be voting on here. One of the things I would say, when we're talking about revenue and enterprise accounts, is that perhaps, you know, it is difficult to budget for what we think we are going to get, like difficult to budget for gate receipts. Obviously, we did better this year in gate receipts, because our football team did better than the last three years. But to have budgeted that we were going to do better in gate receipts would have been awful risky last year when we were coming off. And so it may be that if we have enterprise funds, we don't necessarily want to budget for those, but we can basically use those as kind of as a capital improvement, that we could say, "Then if we get more than we expected, we could say, then that will go into X." And that would probably be a better way of handling that, since you don't know what you're going, going to get at some point. Now, we have the motion on the floor, everyone has gotten to talk .
Excuse me?
And I see your hand, Mr. Mudge. So I, I'm just reminding that everybody that we will eventually need to vote, but I'm going to call on you next, Mr. Mudge, so don't worry.
Well, with respect to this, and I would like to follow up on what Mr. Jones says, all we can go is go back 100 years and look at this budget. Enterprise funds, enterprise funds, and go down to town hall and look, look at, you'll find that gate receipts and rentals have always been a revenue source to our budget.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to take that up with Ride, Mr. Mudge, because I'm, I'm recording it as an enterprise fund, and that is what Ride has instructed the schools to do.
Could you help me and help Ride? What is the enterprise?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mudge, I don't know.
Excuse me?
You will have to take that up with Ride.
What?
I am merely telling you that Ride has communicated that use of buildings is an enterprise fund. I, I can't change that.
Well, then, regardless, okay, is that we can go back to what we have done in the past and just show that as a revenue in our budget to the, to the town council, because we've done that for 100 years, is what I'm saying.
If that's what the school committee wants to do, then that is certainly what we can do.
I would suggest that we read the federal guidelines on financial accounting for local school districts, because that's what they recommend in there. And they don't recognize a, the sports complex as a enterprise fund, because it's not a quid pro quo. We are not, we are not providing a service and getting a revenue. The service that we're providing .
I have to ask that the discussion be .
I'm sorry, I didn't make up the rules.
Let's, let's keep the discussion confined to the motion.
Well, I'm just trying to say that .
This is more of a discussion you could outlaw, you could have offline, because I know that you do not agree with, with our business administrator on this point, and I would like to keep the discussion confined to the motion.
Yeah, well, go ahead.
Well, then, will you yield, Mr. Mudge?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that votes on, on each one of these individually, instead of the current motion to vote on them as a block minus the bus.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment on that. You know, we're going through, and I, and I support your motion, but I must say, we're going through an exercise of futility. I've calculated here that in state aid alone, we're going to be getting $166,000 more dollars, okay, in state aid that isn't in here. We're going to pick up with, between rentals and probably prior year expenses, expenditures, the refund of prior year expenditures, that's probably going to be in the neighborhood of $75,000, $80,000 with all of that. So you're talking $250,000 to $275,000, so of known revenue that we have coming in. So why are we, you know, trying to nitpick this little, you know, these line items here, when if, if this is all we're going to do, why don't we just pick out the difference, which is $250,000 minus the 500? Is, let's just cut to $150,000. I mean, you know, why are we going through this exercise?
Any other discussion? All right, Lorraine, can we take a roll call vote? The motion is to individually vote on each of these cuts rather than voting them, on them as a whole.
Yes. John Biscarden.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
No.
Cheryl Clarkin.
I'm sorry, can you, what, which motion do we have now?
This is to amend the motion to vote on each item individually.
You can put them back, shall? Yeah.
Mrs. Clarkin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Robert Jones.
Yes.
William Mudge.
Yes.
Kimberly Page.
No, I'm ready to vote on all of them.
Amendment passes four to two. All right, so. One of the things that Dr. Rogé had some folks that he had coming before us tonight, and I'm, I'm going to ask the committee if you want to have those folks speak now, or you still want to continue to move on where we're voting on the cuts to make.
I think we ought to continue with the cuts. I would agree. No reason to, to change, change our train of thought right now.
All right, can we, can we take maybe a short five-minute recess? Could I have a motion to take a recess, just so we can have a discussion with Dr. Rogé? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Except the bus. I think this is . Mr. Mudge, could you please come back to the table?
Come on, Billy.
All right, we are back in session again. We, the committee has voted to take one of these, each, each one of these cuts at a time. Mr. Cerisi.
I'd like to make a motion to cut the first three recommended items, the health care, the staffing reductions, the vacation payout.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All right, Lorraine, can we have a roll call vote, please? Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Yes.
Robert Jones.
Yes.
William Mudge.
I abstain.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
John Biscarden.
Yes.
Motion passes five with one extension. Mr. Cerisi.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommended reduction of the transportation billing in the Block Island Technology agreement. Again, as noted earlier, I skipped the eliminating the bus, that is something I'd like to discuss further.
Second.
Any further discussion? Lorraine, can we take a roll call vote, please? Cheryl Clarkin.
Yes.
Robert Jones.
Yes.
William Mudge.
I abstain.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
John Biscarden.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Before, I would like to, to ask for additional information and clarification on these miscellaneous reductions. I realize that you don't have them at, at your fingertips now, Dr. or Ms. King, but you've had to go through those individual UCOA lines to come up with that number. I would like that information supplied to us, please.
Mr. Cerisi, sorry.
Out of those miscellaneous reductions, the custodial services, $14,500, the notation there says, "Based on revised information from vendor," I hope that we can, we can agree to that we have enough information to vote to approve that recommendation tonight. So I'll make that motion.
You want to include the Cherahoe?
Yes. Yep, yep.
Okay.
It's actually an add.
It's an add, but it has to be approved either way, right?
Right.
So the motion would be to approve the recommendation for custodial services and career and tech tuitions.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes, Mr. Mudge.
You're saying that we're going to save $14,000 on custodial services. However, I went through your budget, your '13 revised budget and your '14 budget, and it appears that your custodial expenses that I saw in the budget, in fact, are going to be $144,000 higher than it was in fiscal year '13.
And so this is $14,568 below that.
Well, my, my point is, my point is, it, you are already, okay, $144,000 in excess of what we were in this, this year.
And the recommendation is to knock $14,000 off that number.
Well, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we really need to vet what this number means. It's .
And we certainly can, but at this point, there's a recommendation to knock 14 off of it.
What are we knocking the 14 off of, Larry, is what I'm saying. What's in the budget? What I'm telling you is, in the budget is 1.464, $5,500,000. Is that, are we taking the $14,000 off of that, or are we taking it off the $1,000, $1,320,000 that we spent in fiscal year '13? We don't know what the number is .
You're taking it off your FY '14 preliminary. That's what all of these cuts are coming off of, your FY '14 preliminary budget that was given to you on January 5th.
Sure. So what we're doing is that we know that, that the custodial services is coming off of that, but what, what we don't know, and hasn't been articulated, is that the custodial contract is going up by $140,000. And that's one of the things we talked about before.
Well, I don't know what you're looking at with that, but I, I can get back to you on that. I don't know what you're looking at with the FY '13, but .
I'm looking at the '13 and the '14, but what I'm getting to is, what we need to do, what ever happened to zero-based budgeting? What ever happened to that? What do we pay ?
Zero-based budgeting means, Mr. Mudge?
Yes, I'm very .
Zero-based budgeting means that every single employee and every single expense down to the dollar gets reviewed, not just your expenses. It means every single employee gets justified one by one. So I, I think we need to be very careful in what our understanding of zero-based budgeting is, because I don't think people really understand what zero-based budgeting means.
I think, by the way, from a taxpayer's standpoint, we know what we're paying for teachers, okay? We know what that is, we know what we paid last year, and we know what we're going to pay this year.
That's not zero-based budgeting, Mr. Mudge.
All right, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to .
The next point is, how much did we spend for ?
I'm going to ask that we stop the argument right now. Mr. Cerisi, you have made the motion on the floor to cut the custodial service and the career, and to be adding the career tech tuitions at Cherahoe. We have a second on that.
Right.
So it's, yeah, Mr. Biscarden made it, so, so we have two seconds. I want to make sure that if there are any questions specifically about any of these two items.
I have none.
All right, Lorraine, can we take a roll call vote, please? Robert Jones.
Yes.
William Mudge.
I abstain.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
John Biscarden.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Yes.
Motion passes .
Motion passes, thank you.
All right, so that leaves us with approximately.
Five items.
Five items, plus the bus. Yes, Dr. Ogier.
Mr. Jones, I would ask that you call a budget subcommittee meeting. I noticed that for the last two weeks, there was not one called. That would have been the perfect opportunity for Mrs. King and I to get these questions about UCOA numbers. This information was provided to you, this list of cuts, on Thursday. And I'm getting a lot of information tonight from committee members about how we don't have enough information about what these things mean. We would have been more than happy to provide these things to you over the weekend, as I always tell you in every narrative that I send you about these budgets and about every agenda that I provide. We have a budget subcommittee. So far, Mrs. King and I have gone to one of those meetings. We talked about, for about an hour and a half, two things that we cannot affect on this budget. We did not talk about any of these particular ideas, nor did Mr. Mudge or Mr. Jones or Mr. Biscardin, in this case, call me over the weekend to ask me about these particular issues. So I just want to be clear, you know, I hope there isn't a criticism of us for not providing information to you, because we provided a pretty extensive booklet and a list of these things in advance. And I would hope that you could pick up the phone and call me or come sit in my office, and I will meet with you, with Mrs. King, and go over every UCOA line item with you. But there's this insinuation tonight that I don't take kindly, that we're hiding information, that there's, you know, we don't get the information that we need, you know, this is, as Mr. Cerisi said, this is early in the process, and if you have a question about where something comes from, we have other meetings that we're going to meet, and I can provide you with that. But please don't insinuate that we're trying to hide some information and not give you the information you need, particularly when you have at your disposal, you are the chairperson, Mr. Jones, of a budget subcommittee that hasn't met for, at least as far as I can tell, about the last three weeks in the heart of budget season. So you have some responsibility here, too. If you have questions, please come and see me. I don't bite. I'd be happy to sit down with you and explain every cent of this budget if I have to. But to put all the pressure on us at the meeting in public, I had a lot of people from this district who would have loved to talk about what their hopes were for this budget, and no opportunity to do so.
All right, I see the hands up. I've written down the names of everyone I see. I am going to caution the committee that I would like this meeting to be productive and not to have this start being a back and forth where we start throwing things around as to which way we're going to go. And I would like to stick to the topic on point of how we're going to reduce the budget and make sure that we come in at a balanced item. Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can certainly understand committee members may be looking for additional information on some of these miscellaneous items. But again, I want to caution the committee, you know, you're talking about a $60 million budget. When you start getting into line items, individual line items, and talking about 10,000 here and how are you going to, you know, what exactly happens in the maintenance budget if we eliminate 10,000? Are you going to, Dr. Ogier, are you going to buy two-by-fours instead of two-by-sixes this year? Are you going to buy three-inch nails or are you going to buy two-and-a-half-inch nails? I think, excuse me, I think this is.
Mr. Cerisi, I, you do this all the time.
All right, let's keep the comments focused on our point that we're trying to get to a balanced budget and not to each other, please.
Thank you. I think you get to a point where you more than micromanage the budget. So again, let's remember that a school committee is oversight, not day-to-day operations. And we do have a responsibility to the taxpayers and to the students. Lastly, you know, for members of the committee who it's their first year walking through this budget process, certainly, I can certainly understand, you know, looking for more information or some confusion and whatnot, but for other members, it's, well, no, this is a very preliminary process. The superintendent put forward a budget that had a $550,000 deficit in it.
That's the problem. He shouldn't have.
You don't have the floor right now. Mr. Cerisi has the floor, but I did see your hand, and I have you down.
Thank you.
So now he has put forward a recommendation to the committee to make $550,000 of reductions, so his preliminary budget is balanced. But keep in mind, this is a preliminary budget that's balanced, that's reliant on a 4% local tax increase. There is much more work for this committee to do. For every 1% of that 4% we don't receive, that's another $440,000 the committee will have to cut. Thank you.
Mr. Biscardin, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. I don't think any questions should be construed as throwing stones at anybody here, Dr. Ogier, Mrs. King. I think questions are just that, questions. They're not accusations, they're just questions. Clarification is needed. We've had, again, I asked at the end of last budget season for us to have something with a little more detail in it. I didn't think that was asking much, only because for anybody to come up with these numbers had to go through and look at each line item. You had to analyze each line item and determine what you were going to take out of that particular UCOA line. So that information has already been compiled. All I asked, it be passed on to us so we can look at it. I would never, ever look at and determine what you took out of those line items and criticize that. That is micromanaging. What I'm looking for is information. That's all I want. And I don't think that's out of line. I don't think that's asking for too much. And as far as your remark about weekends, Dr. Ogier, I have a life, my weekends are mine. I will not bother you and interrupt your weekend either on questions regarding schools committees' things. So I hope I've clarified my position on what weekends mean to me.
I can certainly provide you with that information, Mr. Biscardin. I apologize, I wasn't here at the end of last budget season, so I didn't know.
Dr. Ogier was, Ms. Page was, everybody else was. I'm not pointing your fingers at you, I'm saying, these questions were asked, and I made it quite clear, I think, earlier in the evening. If we continue doing the things the same way and we expect different results, that is the definition of insanity. We have to do business differently, we expect results to change. That's just, that's just life. I don't know why that's so hard to believe and hard to understand. Let's try doing something a little bit different. Maybe we tried it six years ago, it didn't work, let's try it again. I get, I get so tired of the dogma that gets thrown around here, well, we tried it six years ago, oh, we tried it before, oh, we do that, we'll have tons of people here complaining. That's immaterial to me. What's material is that we do what's the right, and if we try to, we, I'm sorry. I'm done.
Mr. Mudge.
I take exception, Dr. Ogier, to what you have said. First of all, for your information, the budget committee has been working very diligently behind the scenes trying to put information together so we can analyze what's going on and make some decisions and put some light on this and some of the comments that are appropriate. But let me tell you something. There's no such thing as a preliminary school budget coming from the superintendent. You knew back in December it was a 4% budget you had. You didn't submit a 4% budget to this school committee, you submitted a preliminary budget. There is no such thing as a preliminary submittal for the school committee from the superintendent, period. If you submitted a balanced budget of 4% back in January, January 14th, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about anything today. It was your responsibility, you told the council 4%, we may agree or disagree. You told us 4%. Then why didn't you show us a budget that showed 4% and you had all the cuts in it? Now you're saying, well, I can't give you a 4% budget until you can approve this. We don't have to approve anything. You should have provided us a 4% balanced budget, to 4%, period.
Well, you've been provided with a 4% budget now, Mr. Mudge. I have noticed that you haven't voted on any of the cuts.
Of course, because it's asinine.
All right, Lorraine, we have a, we have a motion on the table, and we have a second. So have we voted on that motion?
The custodial on the Charahoe, is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
That's already been voted on and passed.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm losing my.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
So in the spirit of that, I guess I would remind Dr. Ogier that, yes, at our first budget subcommittee meeting, we didn't have a budget. And you are correct, we haven't met. The graciousness of the other two subcommittee members that my brother-in-law passed away and that I would be out of town at the time of the meeting, and I appreciate their ability to wait for me to come back to be at a meeting to do that. And I do take your comments to heart, and I believe we will be meeting Monday, once I provide our clerk the agenda so she can get that posted forthwith. And in the spirit of what Mr. Cerisi said, I'd say that then to get to 4%, I make a motion that we approve just the rest of the cuts as is.
With the exception of the bus. Great. No? I'm sorry.
Well, I guess my feeling is, is that if we're going to take the bus off the table, then I guess we're going to know that we're still short $70,000.
I have no problems if somebody makes a motion to eliminate the bus, I would vote for it.
Then I guess I'll make a motion to eliminate, to, well, you know, I withdraw my motion because I will defer to Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I certainly recognize that by taking the bus out of the reduction recommendations that we still have a $70,000 deficit going forward. We do meet again on the 12th, and I have, to be quite honest with you, I have a lot of questions and concerns regarding the bus, the transportation audit, and transportation in general. And my own fault, I haven't had the time yet to speak with Dr. Ogier and Mrs. King regarding them, and I'm hoping to make time this week to get some clarity on some of the questions and concerns that I have. So I don't feel prepared to make that vote this evening. And I do recognize by eliminating that from these reductions, we're still looking at a $70,000 deficit going forward, and certainly we can address that when we meet again on the 12th, which is a week from tonight. So if the committee is willing to, I will make a motion again to eliminate, to approve these reductions with the exception of the bus recommendation.
I'll second that, Larry.
Is there any further discussion? Lorraine, why don't we take a roll call vote?
William Mudge.
I abstain.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
John Biscardin.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Yes.
Robert Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Ma'am Chair.
I have a question for the committee first, I see your hand. So I know that other years, we have submitted our main budget, and we have also submitted a number for a 0% increase and a 2% increase. My question to this committee is, how would you like to direct the superintendent to do that? Because it will be the sort of thing of right now, we have all but $70,000 for a 4%. To do the 2% and the 0% will take a lot more finagling. So I guess my question to the committee is, how do you want to present that? I mean, other years, we have put out to this, the community, the cuts, and people have become alarmed and, you know, it's the drastic mix. So I guess I am asking, are you doing that, are we doing that again, Mr. Cerisi? We'll just go down.
I just, I'll make a quick comment on that, but before we adjourn, I actually, and I'm sorry to do this to my colleagues, but there is another topic regarding this budget that I do want to discuss, and I do want to get back to the discussion of revenues in the budget. But before I get to that topic, just to answer your question, Madam Chair, I would like to, I'm comfortable with the format that we've used in past years, which basically was a one-page sheet with the superintendent showing, here's your number at a 4% increase, here's your number at a 2% increase, and here's the reductions I would recommend to get to that 2%. Again, when I say the reductions I recommend, they would be, obviously, the superintendent's recommended reductions. And certainly, I don't think that's something that he's advocating for, and I don't think that's anything that any of us are advocating for. I think he's made it pretty clear, the budget that he's advocating for, I think, just showing to the committee that these are the recommendations that he would have to recommend to get to 2%, which would require him to come up with a list of approximately $880,000 of additional reductions. And I know that is not a fun or quick exercise to walk through, but I think the committee will need to have that information at its disposal, should we have to continue on with that process. And I think it's also important for the budget subcommittee and the council members to have that information as well, the town council members, so they have an idea of what the potential impact is on the school department's budget, depending on how much funding they should allocate for the school department, whether it's 1%, 2%, 3%, 4%. I think for them to have an understanding of what's, okay, what's the impact of what we, what level of funding we provide, I think that's important for them to have an understanding of that. Rather than just have, well, hey, if we only give them 3%, they're going to have to cut another $880,000, I'm sorry, $400,000 off. But what does that $400,000 actually represent? What would they cut? What would the superintendent recommend that they cut?
I'm going to bring you all back to the chart that is in your original budget. We're not talking a small amount of money. I'm going to bring you back to your chart. It shows that your salaries and your benefits are 83% of your budget. If you're looking for large numbers, that's the only place you have them. If you want to cut all your supplies, if you want to shut down all your lights, the only place you have for nearly a million dollars is in salaries and benefits. This $5,000 here and $1,000 there, and let's hope our supplies come in lower, you're not going to get to a million dollars by looking at $500 here and $1,000 there. You did that last year. You're kind of doing it already with the $500,000. So again, you really need to focus on the biggest area of your budget, salaries and benefits.
Madam Chair.
I'm going down the table. Mr. Biscardin.
Thank you, Ms. Page. I think it's, and Larry, I think what you were referring to is kind of like the red, yellow, green last year, right? I think in addition to that, there needs to be, instead of relying on UCOA and all the charts, all the numbers and line items in here, and breaking it out by every which way that this book breaks it out, bear in mind, we have new people on the school committee. I'm not a seasoned veteran by any stretch of the imagination, and we have new people in the town council. So I think it would behoove us to make things as easily understandable as possible, because if we don't, we're relying on others to explain it to them. And I'm not comfortable having other people that are not on the school committee explaining something that we are basically depending, you know, our lives are depending on it, the kids' lives are depending, our educational system is dependent upon it. So I think that in addition to the red, yellow, green, I think it needs to be broken out, similar to what Ms. Clarkin said. Any large changes have to be explained, any larger reductions need to be explained. We need to spell it out as easily, as plainly and simply as we possible. And I realize it's easy for me to sit here and say that because I don't have to do it. I know it's a lot of work, but I think in the long run, it's going to pay off. And that's what I'm urging, that's the, that's the way I would look at it if I were the one making a decision. I'm not, I'm one of the. I'm not, I'm one of seven, I'm just suggesting that we look at things differently and spell it out as if we're explaining it to people who've never seen it before because in essence, that's what we're doing, explaining it to people who have never seen it before.
So are you saying large changes by the UCOA number or not? Because I think, I think I'm confused, I'm sorry, Mr. Biscardin.
Well, my, my, back a year ago, I would have liked to have seen this, in addition to the red, yellow, green that Larry explained, all these sections should have a recap page. All these sections should, and not, not a UCOA recap page, I mean a simple spreadsheet that people, that anybody can look up, look at, and inside of five or 10 minutes, they can make heads or tells of it. Because this, you can, Dr. you can, most people look at this and it, I consider myself average, I look at it after a while, my head's spinning.
So what would you like to see on a recap page?
John, may I comment?
No, Mr. Biscardin.
For example, if you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna look at, let's, this, this, um, the $552,000 preliminary that Dr. O'Jay and you put together. For example, maintenance-related, the maintenance, reduced equipment budget, if that was pulled off of more than one line, I would like to see, I think all the lines need to explain with that how you got to that $65,000.
You do want to see all the lines on that?
Not necessarily, again, not necessarily the UCOA, the UCOA number, to me, that's irrelevant.
No, but you mean by department, though, you want?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that is gonna go a long way in making this thing more digestible to people in a very short period of time, because that's what we're asking them to do, digest this in a very short period of time.
So as a recap, though, how do you want to see that? Because that other sheet is by department. So there was central office, there was maintenance, what, I'm not really sure what you mean by a recap sheet.
John, could I make?
I mean, I'm, you know, I, you know, I'm sorry, Ms. King, I don't have, you know, I don't have a concrete, you know, an example, a template for, for me to suggest to you. All I'm suggesting is to take, is to boil some of this information down into an easily readable format. And again, I know this isn't your, your creation issue, Coa thing, you know, you're working with it and God bless you, you understand it, but...
Well, I'm happy to provide any recaps, I mean, we do have a couple of summaries because I understand what, the one thing that I think we...
Well, can I?
We can provide any recaps that we want, a couple of the items in here, we do have to provide based on RIDE rules.
And that's fine.
We can provide any recaps we want, so...
Maybe tomorrow afternoon, if you're, if you're available, I can, I can come in and we can sit down and look at, I mean...
I'm glad to do that, I mean, I know I have the complete summary recap, you know, there's, there's salaries, there, you know...
And, you know, quite likely...
But if there's any other way you want to see it, we can show it any way you want to see it.
And you know what, Ms. King, it may already be in here, it's just that this thing is so, you know, I find this book so intimidating.
It's a lot smaller than it was last year.
Yeah, I thought so too, but I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know it like you know it. You know this six ways to Sunday, I don't, and maybe it's already in there, maybe we just have to go through it and we can say, this is, this is great, this is what we can use as a, you know...
We can do that.
John, could I make a comment, please?
You'll get your time as much.
My, my comment, John, was...
You'll get your time as much.
No, John, John, I could return, because I wanted to help John, John.
Bill, I'm not the chairperson, I'm finished.
Hang on, I just wanted to make a comment to you, John.
I'll get, I'll, fine, Mr. Mudge, I'll go to you right now.
What, the intent of the budget committee was, John, when we got together, we're working on these things behind the scenes, was to do exactly what you were saying.
Okay.
Okay? So, you know, if you have any comments, please provide them to us too, because we're looking at that, we're sorting that this way and that way and everything else, okay? And, uh, it's, it's a process, but I think we can get through it, so, uh, it's a, it's a work in, a work in, was it, work in process or whatever you wanna call it.
But I would caution you not to be working behind the scenes, you need to work with...
No, working behind, working as the budget committee, we're gonna try to present something.
But that's what you just said, and I'm just like, I want you to work with the administration.
Well, first, well, Mr. Jones can speak to that, but nonetheless, am I gonna continue on my comments before?
Oh, yes, I thought you were done.
Well, no, final thing is, what I have to say is, I like to make a motion that we in fact present a 0% and 2% budget to the town council, based on the fact that they have requested that specifically, and that the 0% budget be the framework of where we start. It's gonna be a difficult thing to do, but we should be, the superintendent, we should give direction to the superintendent to give us a 0% increased budget, and then one with 2% changes on top of that, and then at 4% if we have to. But we need to give the council a budget that shows what we would have to do and the changes we'd have to make at a 0% increase. It could be catastrophic, there's no question about it. But what we need to do is show what the impact is going to be, and then show them what 200 or 2, 1% or 2% more would mean. So we, they know what the impacts are from 0 to 2% and from 2% to 4%. You know, I don't think this is rocket science. We don't have to give the superintendent any more direction than say, give me a budget that shows a 0% increase, give me a budget that shows 2%. And then we can all look at that and sign up for it, or not sign up for it. But we have an obligation to provide this to the town council. And I'll make, like to make a motion that we provide the town council a budget that's without, by the way, without any negative numbers in it, that shows, here's the 2% budget, here's, here's the 0% budget, here's a 2% budget, here's a 4% budget. And, you know, with the computers and stuff, that is not that difficult to do, when you start with a baseline of 0%.
Why don't we have communication with the town council tomorrow and then let, if they have adopted this resolution, that they can send us that in writing so that we can make sure that if that is the requirement, that we receive that in writing before we start with a motion?
That's dated January 14th, I haven't seen that, that was even after the first, our first draft budget was presented.
Maybe we give the town council an action item.
Well, I've never seen it, so it would be nice that if these things are asked for that they get communicated from somebody.
Yeah, why don't we wait before we take a motion and we can communicate with the town council and if they have that in writing, they can send that over and that'll just be done, then if that is what they're adopting.
Good point.
Mrs. Clarkin and then Mr. Jones.
I guess, um, my only comment is that I think a summary synopsis or footnote would be very helpful for everyone and I would be happy to meet with you and Mr. Biscardin tomorrow, Mrs. King, if you want to toss around some ideas on how we might accomplish something simple.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I guess I would say if we're going to, if and when we get from the town council, but if we were to, to go down that track at some point, I would like to see, perhaps, in building on what Mr. Biscardin said, if it's by, by object location, you know, I'd say, Ms. Strisi, I showed you an example that they use in Texas, you know, which is simply a quick and down, which, which sort of explains, and I think this was lacking, being a community member, just observing the process last year, is what isn't going to happen, or what are we not going to do at this location or with this activity if this cut is done? I note last year that, you know, the change in school start times was asterisk in that and it did say may affect start times, but I don't think it was really made clear to the, I can't speak for the members here, we're here, but I don't recall that discussion really coming out because you got this long list of 50 items. So I think it would be helpful, you know, if you, by location, have large variances, to have at least just some narratives that sort of explain that. For example, like Dr. O'Jay did with the $20,000 in furniture or furnishings, or with the $68,000 at the Fish and Cove location for contracted, you know, nurse services. It's at one location, so, you know, is there a short explanation of, of why the 40-something-thousand increase? The last point I guess I want to say is that it seemed to me there was a lot of work done going into this year to achieve some efficiencies. I know you signed a new electric contract in November, which is supposed to generate savings. I guess I would like to see some, some discussion or some additional narrative from, from the superintendent, which talks about looking forward for the next four months, if there's any unexpected expenses that, that he is aware of, or at least potentially projected expenses that are coming into play, so we can at least have a sense of what the glide path is, we are on the fiscal year 13 budget. I know in one of our budgeting assumptions is that there'll be zero variance in expenditures, which we know historically is not going to be true, so it'd be helpful to have what the glide path is on that. And when you present the new budget data, the FY12 audit, I believe, is done, is that correct, Mrs. King?
Yes.
So will the 10, 11, and 12 actuals reflect any, any adjustment that the auditors have made to the, the annual financial reports?
They already do, I don't think, I don't believe those FY12 actuals that you have in there are any different than what they came out with, because the audit was primarily done at the time that FY12 numbers were in there. So you have FY10, 11, and 12 actuals, you have FY13 projections and FY14 budget.
So since the audit is done, do we know the new FY14 tuition rate?
Well, you got two different numbers, so the number that is in the audit is $14,556. However, RIDE does calculate it slightly different, could be a couple hundred dollars different, because sometimes they make adjustments and they take things out to smooth across the districts. So, but the number is $14,556, maybe it's a couple hundred dollars high.
So which, which data do we use, that what's in the, the town audited data or the RIDE?
RIDE is the number that we have to use.
Okay.
And then that, that number, and I know you're talking about Jamestown, that number then gets adjusted further by items that are taken out of that, that $14,5 or whatever it comes out to, based on the Jamestown contract.
Right, so, but we have those figures as well?
Uh, no, actually, we don't, because RIDE, like I said, RIDE will make adjustments and take things out. I don't think they've done for North Kingstown anything dramatic, like I said, but it could be a couple hundred dollars. So we don't know what that number is, they do not have FY12 numbers posted, RIDE does not.
Okay.
FY12 probably will not be done, everybody's loaded, you probably got another month or two, to be real honest with you. FY11 is the most current data that RIDE has up there under their UCOA database.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I think that, yes, Mr. Strisi, that gives you a little bit of, of where the committee wants to go. Mr. Strisi?
I'd just like to have a brief discussion on revenues. And I think it's important that we're all looking at the same numbers and understanding the rationale for the numbers that we're looking at going forward. Looking at our three main sources of revenue, state, local, and Jamestown tuition. The estimated state aid, I just, we're looking at $10,700,000 roughly.
Yes.
And I just want to ask for Mrs. King, so again, we're all on the same page, as far as that $10.7 million state aid estimate, and again, it's an estimate, that number is derived from where at this time?
My understanding is that last year, the town requested that the school department not budget any more in state aid than what had been received in the prior year. So if we were going on that path, we would be budgeting $10,758,000. However, we are certain that our enrollment is going to be less in our March census, again, everything is all out of timing, but we are certain our enrollment is gonna be somewhat less in our March census than what it is in FY13. Therefore, I asked RIDE if they would recalculate our state aid number based on approximately 100 less students. That number is then $10,703,000. Now, that number does vary by the number that's been put into, or that has been requested by RIDE in the governor's budget by $163,000 or $166,000. Last year, I think it was almost $300,000, that it was different, that that number was not picked up by the school department until June.
The governor's budget reflects approximately $160,000.
More than the $10,700, yes.
Can we, again, I'm trying to avoid any miscommunication going forward. Dr. O'Jay, can we get something, certainly not required to, but again, to have open lines of communication here and collaboration, can we get something in writing from the town manager as far as what he's recommending, what number that we use for estimated state aid? Because in my previous year's experience, when the council goes to adopt the budget, this always becomes an issue.
I will ask for that in writing.
So I would like to get something in writing from the town manager, certainly is not required to, it's a request, if we could have what number he is recommending we use as a state aid estimate and his rationale for that recommendation. And again, my purpose for doing this is this becomes an issue every year when we go to adopt this budget.
Mr. Strisi, you're absolutely right.
Excuse me?
The fact of the matter is, we should follow what I own general law, because it's specific in there.
Mr. Mudge, Mr. Serisi has the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, I understand your rationale for the estimate that you're using and I'd like something communicated to us from the town manager as well. Because ultimately, the council will vote to adopt and allocate a budget and they, in previous years, in the recommendation of the manager, or based on whatever information he has available to him, whether it be the governor's budget, recommended budget or governor's estimate, our state aid estimate has been adjusted. So I think that's important, that we have that number nailed down and why we're using it, what estimate we're using and why we're using it. So that's one area of revenue I wanted to discuss or get clarity on. Secondly, going back to our largest funding source of revenue is local aid. I just want to, again, point out to the committee, and I think it's very important that we realize, our request is a 4% increase in local aid, which represents roughly $1.8 million in additional local aid over what we received last year. Looking historically over the last four years, in 2010, we received a half a percent cut in local aid. In 2011, we received 1.75 new state aid dollars. In 2012, it was a zero, and in 2013, it was a 2% increase. So I just want the administration, the community, and the committee to be cognizant of the fact that you're requesting 4% increase, when historically over the last four years total, we've received a 3.3% increase if you add together. So, and that's despite the fact that, again, local tax revenues have gone up roughly almost 15%. Only 3.25% of that new tax revenue has gone to the school department. The reason why I'm pointing this out is because, as I had mentioned to some of my colleagues during the meeting and during the break, you need to realize for every hundred, for every 1% less than that 4% request represents an additional $440,000 in cuts that the committee will need to make on top of the work that's been done tonight. So that's the big picture and that's, you know, from an oversight perspective, that's what I like to focus on. And lastly, the Jamestown revenue relatively flat and actually a decrease because of an estimate and a decrease in student enrollment as well, so. I think those big revenue numbers, to make sure that we're all on the same page, we may not all be in an agreement, but we only need to be looking at the same numbers and understanding the rationale for why do we, why are we using this state aid number? Why are we using this local aid number? And how does that change things if these numbers aren't what we're estimating them to be? That's very important. Thank you.
Mr. Mudge?
You know, it's just simply amazing to me that we sit here, year after year, and we worry about what our revenues are. Why don't we just follow what I own general law? I've said it so many times, it's very specific, I don't care what the town manager says. And by the way, I am so upset with these phantom things that come out of the town, or
town or come here. It's about time that if we get something from the town, that we get these discussions documented and put in writing because I don't care what the town manager or anybody else may or may not have said. Rhode Island general law is clear. We ought to budget what is... we are to budget what the governor presents to the General Assembly, period. Rhode Island general law, period. And I will send everybody once again that law.
All right. Mr. Jones?
Either Mrs. King or Dr. Ojai. In October, you receive a projection from the state municipal department. Is that correct? That is signed off on by both the school department and the town?
I don't think we sign off on it, but we do receive projections and...
Right. Well, you signed that you received the projections, correct?
I don't recall signing. I know that we go to meetings and they present information to us. I don't think we signed off on it. I didn't sign anything that said I got it. And then the number that was put into the governor's budget was slightly different than that number as well. It was a little bit higher.
Right. But what was the projection then for state aid?
About the same number. It wasn't... it was with the $166,000. It was probably, I think, $103,000 increase over the prior year.
Okay. So, at least the town manager was aware of that projection in October, that it would be at least $10,800. I do believe he signs off on it, but we can definitely in your conversation with him get that. If you could provide a copy of that projection to the committee, that would be helpful so we know what figures were available in October. I'd appreciate that. I guess I would point out that if we're looking at numbers and we look at, for example, FY12, the carryover where there was no increase in local tax revenue, how much money was re-appropriated from the FY11 fund balance?
I think that is in your number. Hold on one second here. I wasn't hearing FY11. I think that was the... that was a big year. Was that the big year or was FY12 the big year?
From FY11 into FY12.
So, do you mean for the FY11 year or the FY12 year?
For the FY12 year where there was zero local fund tax increase.
Oh, I got you. Hold on. I do have that number.
Which is roughly 3.5%. And how much was actually spent on encumbrances? In other words, spent forward to cover FY12 costs?
It was all spent on FY12 costs.
No, I mean, in addition to the one... that was re-appropriated fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
How much was spent in FY11 on encumbrances for forward into FY12?
I don't know. I don't even know how I would get that information. I'm not sure what your question is, to be honest with you, because if anything was spent in FY11, it would have been accrued in FY11. So, something in FY12 wouldn't have been spent from FY11. Do you mean the difference between the encumbrances at the end of the year that had to get reversed? Is that what you mean?
No, I mean, actually...
Refund a prior year expenses?
No, if you look in... now that I found it, thank you, Mr. Maj. On page 88 of the preliminary budget, there is down below amount reserved for FY12 budget. That's one of the... So, there was 1.5% that was re-appropriated, but it says here there was 1.1 million that was reserved for future year budget. So, in a sense, that's roughly 2.5 million, right? Even though there was 0% tax increase, it was actually 2.5 million of funding that carried over into the year that there was 0% tax increase.
Okay.
So, I guess my point is that we should also be cognizant that the assumption for the FY14 budget is that there is a 0% variance on... 0% budget to actual going into FY14. Is that correct?
I'm sorry. I don't know your question.
So, for FY14, you're essentially planning that there is going to be only... I guess it's not zero. It's $13,000.
Oh, that... yes. You know what? I understand now. You're correct. Now, part of those funds that are reserved, I apologize, Mr. Jones, part of those funds that have been reserved are because of, well, not the million one, but the $13,000 in FY14 is for the early retirement. There's one month left of that early retirement that was, I guess, in 2009 or 2010. And you can see that on the fund balance that in FY11, that was $265,000. In FY12, I don't know why that number's... why there's no number there because there was money that was spent on that. It had to be reserved for that early retirement incentive. That's what the $13,000 is for FY14. So, that's the only part of the fund balance that gets reserved. So, there's something specific that it's for.
Right.
And I can find out what in FY11, that million 154 was. I don't know what that is specifically. I can get that to you.
Right. I guess my assumption is when we're looking at revenue sources, one of the things that we also should be cognizant of is that we're only planning on, right now, reserving $13,000.
Well, yeah, that's because I believe if you... and again, I was not here, but one thing that I think you need to be careful of as well is using fund balance for what we all say is a structural issue. So, if you are going to use your fund balance in FY14 to pay for three or four employees that you want to keep, that means you need to figure out how you're going to pay for those employees every year thereafter because you have created for yourself a structural deficit by taking fund balance for something that is not a one-time item. And I believe that the committee was trying to move toward fund balances for one-time items as opposed to something that you're going to have to try to figure out every year because what you're doing by that is you're kicking the can down the road. So, filling a gap with a fund balance in your general fund that's for something other than a one-time item is perhaps not the best route to go if you have other avenues.
No, I agree with you because if you look at FY12, there was unfunded teacher positions of $257,000. I guess my point simply is that we should be careful in looking at one set of numbers without the context of perhaps in a 0% growth year, there was actually 2.5 million of extra funding that was realized back into the fiscal year. Thank you.
Yes, but I believe a lot of that money was... was the...
FARA money.
Was the American Recovery and Relief Act in that we received money from the federal government. And so, that was one of the things that wasn't as painful that year was because we did receive that federal money, that we put it into our fund balance. We did not use it for our regular expenses. And so, that was one of the things that we said, "Okay, we cannot use this for regular expenses." So, by the end of that year, we had a very large fund balance because we got it from the federal government. And that was the last year we got it from the federal government. So, it was appropriate to put it in fund balance versus to be using it for general expenses. So, that was part of the reason. The $13,000 we have here is the last year that we promised folks who retired, took an early retirement two years ago, to promise to pay some of their health care to get them to retire earlier versus later. So...
Jesus, you... I'm going to shut up.
It was incentive, but we can't do that all the time. We're pretty soon... you skew the amount of people who you have coming in and you build up this big bubble of people who then go out. So, right. So, you can't... we did it for a couple of years, but we did not do it last year.
The pool is actually reducing on people that are even in that close enough range, if you will. So, every year when you do do stuff like that, your pool does decline on people that are even close to being eligible to even be able to consider that.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Does public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Thank you, Lorraine. I appreciate that. I even have it right here in front of me. I turned the page. Oh, yes, we have public... we have citizens' comments and I'm sorry, Mr. Blastlog. I was not trying to cut you off.
Yes, you are.
Good evening. One thing I would like to mention is just for folks who watch this later or whatever, it's 9:30 in the evening and by moving public comment to the end of your agenda, you make it awful hard for people to sit through your meetings, which are wonderful to watch and partake in, as you all know, but I want to just make that comment briefly. But the reason I wanted to come up to the microphone was to talk about something. I'm going to rewind your meeting a little bit to one of the first things that you talked about, which was the potential of linking administrator raises to the teacher contract and any raises that they got. Mrs. King was speaking a little while ago and mentioning that a lot of the big numbers in this budget that you're looking at are in salary and benefits and that relates directly to the discussion that you were having back then. Because one thing we hear every budget year is the fact that there's a limited amount of discretionary area for cuts. There are certain things that are already allocated. They need to be spent no matter what. By adopting a policy like that that would provide an automatic increase, what you're doing is you're adding to that problem. That's where that problem comes from. There is a point in every year cycle of the things that you look at where those non-discretionary items are discretionary. When you're reviewing a contract, whether it's a union contract or otherwise, or whenever you're looking at raises, and by making them simply automatic, you've now added an automatic 1.5% increase or whatever it may be, 1%, 2%, 3% to that section of the salary and benefits calculation. It's not to say that people aren't entitled to raises. People can't stay at zero forever. All the things that Dr. Ojai said are all true. If you get out of sync with other districts, people will move and that's something you can't allow to happen. But at the same time, to have a simply blanket increase, that's the kind of thing that puts the pressure on the budget, that makes it more difficult for you folks later on and requires more cuts and other things. That's what I wanted to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent point. Excellent point.
All right. Seeing no one else would like to comment, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you do.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.